Righty-ho, everyone. Hello. Good evening and welcome to the September Cabinet Meeting. Before the formal agenda, the usual evacuation announcement. If the fire bell rings, please leave by the Duke Street exit. Don't use the lift, remain by the War Memorial. If you need the toilets on the landing, and if you can film the meeting but only people sitting around the table, not in the audience, and to use your microphone. Right, apologies?
Thank you. I've had apologies from councillors Bonnet, Hawkins, Large, Raven and Sherlock.
Thank you much.
Wilson and Gobhann.
Okay. Good, okay. And declarations of interest, you can close it now or if it comes up on the item as it occurs. Item three is the minutes of the... Oh, sorry, councillor Jeeps, yeah?
Yeah, I'm going to, I want to make a comment on the minutes.
Okay, go on then.
Do I have that now? I accept obviously that we pre-see the discussions that took place about the serious risk of wildfires, but the minutes do not reflect what was said by councillor Moore, where she stated that Chelmsford Garden Community had already been provided with all the information by the city and the fire brigade. I'm told by Chelmsford, by the Chelmsford Community, Garden Community, that that is categorically not true. In fact, subsequently, they had to ask three times for that information. One was prior to the meeting on the 7th of July, the second time was the 11th of July and the 30th of July, and they did not actually receive a reply until the 6th of August, nearly a month after the Cabinet meeting. Even then, a risk assessment wasn't provided. Apparently, they haven't actually been done in the way you would think they would be. And so I want to make sure that that's reflected in these minutes, because clearly, members of the public viewing the YouTube would have seen that comment made. And during the course of the conversation, I think it was, it was almost suggested, why was I bothering bringing it when everything was in hand, when the Chelmsford Garden Community hadn't received the information that they had asked for? Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm sure we can fix that, if it still needs fixing. It sounds like it has now been fixed, albeit perhaps later than it should have been. The minute, yes, thank you. The minutes are actually correct in that sense. Right, can I sign those minutes, please? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Right, moving on. I don't think we have any public questions? No? Okay. Moving on then, members' questions for issues for which the Cabinet is responsible? Do we have any questions? No? Okay. Moving swiftly on then. Item six, councillor Foster, the homelessness and rough sleeper strategy.
Thank you. Good evening, members. I am presenting for approval the homelessness and rough sleepers strategy for the council for 2025 to 2030. The council has to publish a homeless and rough sleepers strategy to establish the council's ambition and priorities to reduce homelessness and rough sleeping in the city. Obviously, it actually describes what we are doing, but we are legally obligated to produce a strategy. We have found that, after consultation and after looking at all of our information, that the three main causes of homelessness and rough sleeping in the city is family and friends breakdown, breakdown of relationships within family and friends, end of a private rented tenancy, or people experiencing domestic abuse. People here will be aware that we have consulted extensively and reviewed the homelessness, the strategy in quite a bit of depth over the, over the months. We started with a working group to which members were invited and made contributions to right at the beginning. We then went to policy board, we went out to consultation and review, we consulted quite extensively with our partners, and then it went back to policy group again. In the strategy, the, obviously, it's like 52 pages, so you'll be glad to know I'm not going to go through in great depth, but just to say that the main ambition and priorities are universal prevention, targeted prevention, intervention and recovery via partnership working. We cannot do this without working effectively with our partners. You know, as people know, we do not generally own the social housing stock in the city, so we have to work with our partners and also to provide support to people who have been homeless or are about to become homeless. And there should be, we want an integrated approach to local housing options, and basically, that boils down to, we need to increase supply. We need to do as much as we can with our partners to increase supply. Basically, we need more social housing. So, the priorities in a nutshell are to increase supply, improve housing conditions, support vulnerable people via and effective partnerships. There is an action plan, which is page 40 to 52 of the strategy, and that sets out all of the things, that all of the actions that, in fact, it runs from 25, but as we started a while ago, a lot of those actions are being undertaken as we speak. So I recommend to everybody the homelessness and rough sleepers strategy for approval.
Okay. Anybody got any questions?
Just to ask one brief thing. You use the word affordable housing quite a lot in this, really. But other places, you talk about supported housing and so on, really. I mean, affordable housing, as we know, includes various different definitions, really, but isn't this actually concentrating on ones where we can actually have rented ones, as opposed to shared ownership and things?
Absolutely, yes, it is.
It's just, isn't it clear? I mean, there's the heading, I don't want to go through it line by line, but it says wherever it is on page six. It says, talks about private rented homes, fine, and then it talks about affordable housing. And then it says the number of lettings, which is, I know where we're actually talking about, but if we don't define affordable housing more clearly, that we're targeting it, because we're not targeting people who are getting discounts on that, not buying £300,000 houses because they're homeless, are they? I just wonder whether it might be made clearer. I'm not trying to be sort of a botantic on it.
No, I think that's a, I think that's a really good point, and I think it is because, you know, we of the council, yes, we have to provide affordable housing, but our main concentration is on affordable housing for rent. Absolutely correct, and we'll have a look and see what we can do there.
All right, anyone, nobody else? Okay, is the strategy agreed? Thank you very much. So, moving on, greener Chelmsford item, Little Baddo. Councillor Moore.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, members and members of the public. I am bringing to you tonight a report that covers the proposal to designate North Hill, Little Baddo as a conservation area, following consideration both at Chelmsford Policy Board and through public consultation. Declaring a conservation area in Chelmsford, and especially in places like Little Baddo, brings a host of benefits that protect the heritage and the community character of a space. They preserve the historic character of North Hill in Little Baddo, which has a distinct architecture and a historic charm. You can see a lot of the detail in a comprehensive report that accompanies this paper and is in the agenda pack by Michael Hurst, who I'm very pleased to say is our principal heritage officer, has joined us this evening. So thank you very much, both for your report and potentially for answering any further questions this evening, Mr. Hurst. Planning applications in these areas must also consider the area's special character. That means inappropriate alterations or demolitions are less likely to be approved. It does not necessarily prevent sympathetic improvements. There are also protection of the natural features in an area. Trees and hedgerows within an area like this will gain added protection, preserving biodiversity and the rural landscape itself. There's also the important element of community identity and community pride in a place. Conservation status can also foster local pride and encourage stewardship of our environment and our heritage. Chelmsford City Council currently has, I believe, 25 designated conservation areas across the district. These span urban and rural settings, including Chelmsford Central, Great Baddo, Danbury and Little Waltham. And when we compare the number with neighbouring councils, with 25 currently, our conservation areas place us above average compared to some of our Essex neighbours. For instance, Brentwood, which has around 13, Molden District Council, I believe, 21, and Braintree District Council has 18. So our proactive approach in Chelmsford reflects our commitment as an administration and as a council to preserving urban heritage and rural landscapes like those in Little Baddo. And I would heartily recommend that Cabinet support the proposal tonight, and the options are to approve designation of the conservation area at North Hill, Little Baddo, or to not approve designation of the conservation area. And as I say, the preferred option is option one. And I hand over to you, Chair, for any further comments or questions. Thank you.
Councillor Armstrong.
Can I just start by saying thank you very much for doing this and bringing this forward, especially when I know Michael Hurst, with his heritage officer role in all of planning and stuff, is very busy and these things take a lot of work and time. When I was doing some conservation work for the whole region of the Chelmer Valley, I noticed that Little Baddo had an environmental sort of conservation area, but didn't have a historic conservation area. And I highlighted it to a few people in the room and some people at Little Baddo. And busy as they are in Little Baddo, they got on it straight away and they started emailing Michael. And I know I emailed Michael a few times at the beginning of this process, and I'm very grateful to see it through. I know three areas were originally proposed because of local plan stuff going through. Only one central core has come through at this time. I'm hoping once our local plan's done and maybe part of a future neighbourhood plan review for Little Baddo, some of the other areas, maybe around the Grade One listed church, may also get included into smaller pockets. So I am very grateful that we got this and really excited that maybe that in the future we can even do some more. I completely agree how wonderful it is that we have so many conservation areas, and that is purely down to the dedication as council over many years and do a very good job of protecting them, because not only every one that we put in is a great protection, actually, it's something that we need to monitor and manage in every planning application going forward. So that is a commitment from us, I'm grateful for that. One thing, this one obviously has just been written, has been written in a full report style, which is incredibly encouraging to see. Stock's the other example that has one. Unfortunately, all of our other conservation areas don't currently have one. I raised it before, that they've all were done before I was even born, and are a single sheet. But I'm pleased that this one's come, and I'm hopeful that maybe over the next few years that we can actually review and go through them all. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Armstrong.
All right. Yes, councillor Highland.
Thank you, Chair. In this report, does it give us any insight to the impact on the local plan? Does it, what sort of acreage does it take out of the local plan? Is there an impact on our available sites for compliance with the local plan?
I will need to defer to officers for this, please. Thank you.
None of the areas to be designated is affected by any allocated sites. Most of it's within the rural area. So, and there's obviously policies within the local plan to protect conservation areas, so it won't hinder any delivery of housing, which is what you're getting at.
Thank you. So there's, there's no grey belt in that area, is that correct?
No, there's not. I mean, there's no green belt designated in that area at all. It's all rural area, effectively. So it wouldn't command a grey belt designation, no.
Okay, any, nobody else? No, is that agreed? Right, moving on. It's quarter past seven already. There we go. Only quarter past seven. Right, moving on to the next item, which is our submission on local organisisation that we discussed informally last week. So probably don't need to say a great deal, but you may have thought of some questions that you wanted to ask, which you didn't ask last week. So I just wanted to apologise if I'm repeating things that you already heard last week. But this agenda item, the paper that's attached to this agenda item runs to a really chunky 200, what was it, 261, thank you, yes, 261 PDF pages, some of which are two pages when you print them out. So there's a lot, a lot to read. Still not enough for councillor Highland, because it doesn't, every single spreadsheet isn't included, but there's an awful lot of spreadsheet data tucked away at the back of the document. As I, as I said the other day, there are three main reasons why we're recommending the five unitary model. It will deliver our growth ambitions and, and improve public services, but it will also crucially keep local government as local as possible. And it will in fact save more money than all the other proposals that are on the table, both in the short and long term. Now, that last bit is one of, one of the six government criteria, financial sustainability. And we commissioned Grant Thornton to do a lot of work on behalf of the five unitary business case. And to be honest, we were pleasantly surprised that they came back and said that the five unitary model would actually be cheaper than the three or the four unitary model. And I think Mr. Evely and I gave a couple of examples of why we, why we've come to that conclusion, one of which is the transitional costs will be less in our five unitary proposal, which, if you think about it, merging three district councils will be difficult enough. If you had to merge five district councils, that's exponentially more complicated in terms of the number of systems and processes, and indeed, the number of staff that need to be reorganised. So that's just one example of why the transitional costs under the five model will be less than under the three. And in the longer term, the key thing, as I think we all appreciate, going forward for a unitary is the costs of adults and children's social care. And so we spent a long time with the consultants, people too, who have done a lot of work on the, on adults and social care in other reorganisation areas. And they came to the conclusion, having looked at up and down the country, other unitary authorities, that the costs of delivering adults and children are most efficient and effective at the sort of the medium sized unitary level of sort of 250,000 to 350 or 400,000 population, because those are small enough to be local but large enough to be strategic. So that was on the costs, but also, I cannot emphasise enough how important the local government is. Now, we've been told we have to do this, whether we want it or not, so we have to come up with the best of a bad job potentially. And we feel that the five unitary model does its best to keep local government local. Mr. Evely and I and a couple of other officers met with members of parliament last week, and the MP for Molden said that he thought it was, he, he supported this proposal, as did many of the others, and he thought it was, although he didn't think LGR was a bright idea in the first place, if it's got to go ahead, that he would support the five unitary model, because he couldn't see the relevance of putting Molden and Harlow in the same council. Molden, as we know, is coastal, rural, and Harlow is very much urban and growing. And to have a strategic growth plan that would encompass the diversity of both those areas and everything in between seems a bit of a stretch. Also, the physical connections between West Essex and Central Essex are, are poor. So keeping local government local is key to this, and delivering the growth ambitions and improving services. I think it's, it's important that we think as we approach a decision and then the transitional period, that we are creating new councils. They won't be big district councils or small county councils, they will be new councils, and bring together, hopefully, the best of both. The proposal that we've, we've set out in the five unitary case meets all of the six government's criteria for LGR, and, as I say, secures the financial sustainability, but hopefully retains civic pride and sense of local as well. And in the agenda item, we've included both the very long version and the slightly shorter version. We didn't print many, we gave these carefully limited print run of the executive summary. If you don't read the whole document, I would urge you to read the shorter, the slightly shorter version. If you do delve into the longer version, the summary at the beginning of each chapter tells you what the content of that chapter is. And as I said the last week, I'd like to thank all of the officers that worked on this, particularly at Southend, who've been great in their commitment that they've put into this project. Our own officers, so Mr. Evely and Mr. Reeves have worked, and the team have worked really hard on the financial section. And I think that's a really substantive, excellent piece of work that we've got in there. And so I want to say thank you to them. This is taking up an awful lot of officer and leader time when we want to concentrate on solving homelessness, maybe not solving it, but addressing it anyway, and all the other things we should be doing. So this, this is the proposition before you this evening, that we should support the five unitary. It is the only proposal that is supported by leaders from all political groups, supported by 10 of the 15 council leaders in Essex. And, but whatever is the final decision, we need to make it work, and we need to crack on, and we hope that we'll get a prompt decision so that we can reduce the uncertainty and get on with delivering. There will be a transitional period next year, 2026, and then the formal shadow election in 27, which has a formal process to build for the new council to take effect in 2028. So I'm sure that time will rush past, because certainly, it's just, it's about nine months since everyone started saying, oh, is LGR going to happen? I think it's going to happen. And now it looks virtually certain. Surrey are a bit ahead of us, they're going to have their reorganisation in 2026, than the other six counties. It looks like we're in the priority programme, but the others, the rest of the county councils are also expected to catch up very quickly, just a couple of months behind us. So that's, that's our proposition, and happily take any other question, any questions that you have. So councillor Highland.
Yeah, I mean, it's a very good document, I have to say. It reminds me of the city status, one that we put out years ago, just slightly longer. But from that point of view, I think it sets out very clearly all the points. I mean, we can all argue about how many there should be. Has Braintree made a decision yet, by the way?
No, Braintree Council is just going to, there's no recommendation from the leader, he's just going to leave it up to the councillors to decide on Monday evening.
On Monday evening.
I think it's Monday, they're having a full council.
Yeah, okay. But otherwise, no, I think there's a logic in what we're putting forward. It doesn't leak the famous 500,000, does it, that that's sort of...
Become a guideline rather than a firm target, yes.
Yeah, because we're the smallest of all of the ones that are in this.
We're the second smallest. West Essex would be the smallest.
And so from that point of view, we discussed it last week, and unless my colleagues want to say any more, then, you know, we're happy to support what's going forward. It has been probably the best one for all our residents to have, really. And if the government reads it, as opposed to just puts its finger into a pot...
Indeed.
Then it'll be interesting. I haven't seen the Essex one as yet, of course, but we have a seminar with them tomorrow or something.
Yes, it'll be published tomorrow with full council.
I don't know whether it's going to look much like this, or...
Well, ours looks much better.
Oh, well, I'm sure ours will be, well.
Ours, ours has, ours has photos, you know.
Yes. Well, it's the photos that make all of these things.
Well, yes, picture speaks a thousand words and all that.
Yeah, and all that, well, yeah, but I mean, it is actually very true that we are putting, I think, you know, having read through quite a lot of it, really, all sort of major points about Essex, really. And then I think that, you know, from our point of view, if my colleagues want to say anything in particular.
Yeah, sure, councillor Steele, yeah.
Yeah, I'll say something. I can't let it go without saying something about LGR. I would like to say congratulations to the officers and the team for putting this together, very thorough analysis. I've been subjected to, subjected to, I've, I've seen both cases, this one and the county council one, both compelling cases, both supported by independent consultants. I say both compelling, but coming to the opposite conclusion, so. But the next step is that all four go to the government, and then the government will decide whether to consult on one of those, two of those, three of those, four of those, and then they'll come back to us. I feel a bit like a contestant on Who Wants to be a Millionaire, where, where you do the 50/50 and two options come at you and you, you have to decide. So I wouldn't be surprised if we don't end up in that position where two options go back to the, to the public with the two compelling cases, and then they have to, the public will have to give their view. So it's, this isn't, this isn't the done deal. Once you submit this, it's going to come back, and we all have to look at the two cases, or three or four at that time. So I'll make no further comment. Thank you.
Indeed, yes. Rochford produced theirs yesterday and then withdrew it because it was full of errors, so they had to start again. Rochford, so it was full of errors. So they said, they'll withdraw their submission from yesterday, we'll have a new one today or tomorrow, well, tomorrow now. But, yes, because they used the same numbers for, for different options. Yes. So, yeah, you're right, there's different sets of numbers. I mean, we feel that the Pricewaterhouse model is a top-down model, which is a nationwide model, which they've used, rather than we've actually gone and used the figures that are actually in the published accounts from recent unitary authorities. actually in the published accounts from recent unitary authorities in order to get our cost base. We also think the chances with the Pricewaterhouse model assumes all the transitional costs in one year, which we just think's impossible, particularly given that a large, seventy percent of the county council's spending is outsourced contracts, so you can't transition those within five years. So, anyway, we are where we are. As you say, the public will be consulted in November and December, the minister will make a decision in March, ideally sooner, but they said to make a decision in March. Right, the recommendation is to endorse the five unitary model, is that agreed? Thank you very much. Right, so that's that for that part. Does any of it have to go to council? No. Okay, I think our members of the public have left, haven't they? Yes. But anyway, I do need to formally move under section one hundred and eighty-four of the Local Government Act, that the press and public be excluded. Is that agreed?